So announcements.
Um, goodness, I don't, just a couple of things to note. I'm sorry, I wasn't quite prepared with this. The parklets have been installed downtown, so if you haven't been downtown, you should check those out. Try to support the restaurants if you feel comfortable. And I think Duo has some nice art that they installed on theirs and the other restaurants can also either paint the barriers or maybe do something that Duo did. And then the Handy Stations, which is something that Felicity was a part of with Erin Maly O'Keefe and DBA and Brattleboro Housing Partnerships, they they unveiled their first Handy Station in front of the void, which is a hand sanitizing station and there's a cool button to play a jingle about washing your hands. So if you're downtown, check that out as well. I think that's all I have for announcements. Andrew, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't think so. Maybe we're reviewing the proposals for the Western Avenue like scoping study.
Yep.
Is it four? We got four or five?
We got, we received four proposals. We'll be reviewing them by next week and picking the consultant to do that scoping study. So that's moving forward. And that's the area from exit two, east to Main Street, along High Street and Western Avenue.
Okay.
How did they decide where to put the parklet? Did like restaurants request or?
Yeah, so that was a partnership between DBA and speaking to the town manager primarily, but trying to figure out how the town could support the businesses. And they looked at a couple of different things using some of the public parks or Harmony Lot, and they settled on the parklets and the town provided the Jersey barriers. Each restaurant, DBA then reached out to each restaurant and those that were interested all got space. Sometimes it's not exactly in front of their restaurant, but that's how it came to be. Thanks. You're welcome.
Okeydoke. Are there any public who would like to comment? This is your opportunity.
Um, hello.
Hi.
I'm just here to, I might have comments later, but in the downtown design plan part. But no unrelated stuff now. So hello.
Okay, cool. Anybody else? I see ECI Engineers Construction, but I don't know if that is public, who that is. All right.
You know what Felicity? They are on the phone.
Is there a way to ask if you have a, would like to comment? Hey, it's okay. You don't need to worry.
Andrew, do you know how to do that?
You're just totally fun. ECI is me. It's Prudence. I'm on, I was trying to go on my son's computer, but I switched to my
Okay.
To my iPad.
Hi, Prudence.
Hi Sue. Um, okay, well then, then that's it for public comments. I'm gonna, I just having heard some thunder. If the power goes out, I'm gonna lose you guys as I assume we all are. I mean, but, but sometimes my power goes out. So if that happens, it happens. So we have two minutes left over to approve the minutes from May 18th and the minutes from June 1. Does anybody have any comments? Let's take May 18th first. Anybody have any corrections, comments or additions to those minutes? Hearing none? Wait, I just have one question. I'm sorry. I should have written better notes, but there's one comment. I think it might be in the May 18th, the comment about the parking. There's parking, there should be, there's parking U. It says something that I think it meant a number of spaces. Did anybody else catch that? There was a thing that said opening U parking, U, just the letter U. And I assume it meant 10 or 15 or seven or eight or, so that was just a typo that needed to be corrected. I don't know if that was in the many.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not finding it really quickly, but we'll take a look.
Okay.
Oh, I just saw it. It is in the May 18th.
It is in the May 18th. Okay, so I can't, I think that was just a unspecified number of.
I think it's supposed to be to opening up, so it's supposed to be up, opening up parking spaces for outdoor dining and retail.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so does anybody else have any comments, additions, changes, edits to May 18th minutes? Oh, okay, then I need a, Tom, are you, is that, you need, yes, Tom. You have to unmute yourself. You have to unmute yourself, Tom. Can't hear you. Still having trouble hearing you, Tom.
Hey, Tom, if you want, you could type it into the chat and one of us can read out what you want to say.
Yeah, because we still can't hear you. Can you type it into the chat?
Never mind.
Never, is it?
I don't know.
Oh, how annoying.
Can you hear us, Tom? Yeah, okay.
Uh, what should we do? Go like this if you want us to just keep going, Tom. Make your, make a, make a round, like it's okay, we can just keep going.
Yeah, he said we can move on.
Move on, okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of May 18th, 2020.
I'll move. We approve the May 18th minutes.
Kate will second.
Great. All those in favor of approving the minutes, May 18th, why don't you turn on your cameras and put your thumbs up? Okay, um, the minutes are passed unanimously. All right, June 1st. Anybody comments on the June 1st minutes? No comments? Motion to approve? Tom makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Kate will second.
Kate seconds. All those in favor of the minutes as circulated. Right, the minutes pass without change unanimously. Okeydoke. Downtown plan discussion, yes? Is that right? I'm gonna check the yes. Downtown plan. Brandy, do you want to start us off?
Sure, and Sue or Andrew, I don't know who's if I could show my screen at some point?
Yep, I'm going to.
Enable that, that'd be great. We won't start there, but I'll probably want to turn it on. So I've got two sort of parts to the agenda. Okay. Just a minute now, I have to deal with my computer wanting my attention. Okay. I think it'll let me do it now. Yep, okay, looks like it enabled it. So there's two parts to the agenda that I would like to get through tonight. So you've gotten a largely completed version of the story map. We haven't looked at it since 3 o'clock this afternoon. I did dump some of the background pieces that still needed to get put in are in there. So I wanted to walk through the strategies and the next steps portions of that, particularly focusing on the pieces you guys haven't, we haven't talked about yet or previous meetings. And then we need to talk about the wrap up in terms of how we're going to modify the, what was in the scope to finish out the project. So I think we can start with the, looking at the story map pieces and talking through any of those remaining issues there. With that, I'll start sharing my screen.
There's often a little delay when you go to share.
Yeah, my computer's being grumpy. It actually wants me to quit, go to meeting and try again. I don't know what the issue is.
If you want, I mean, it's not as, it's not as smooth, but I could share it and you could walk us through it.
Why don't I just jump on and jump off because it'll be a lot easier. And I think it's wanting some settings changed, so.
Okay.
My computer is being grumpy, so I'm sorry. Just let me disconnect and reconnect quickly.
Okay.
Sue, while we're just waiting, are the municipal buildings open yet? Or what's the status of the town?
Yeah, they're not open yet to the public. I don't know when they are going to be. I think we're definitely moving slowly. But yeah, so they're not open. You know, when they are open, could we run a planning commission meeting? Probably. There's some other boards and committees that maybe have too much, too many people that attend, take more than the 25. That's where the governor's at right now. So, but if you need something, all staff are working. Usually if somebody is there most days, generally it's for emergency type things, so.
Okay, thanks.
But we continue to issue permits and process applications and do record searches, so.
Okay.
Brandy, you're back. That was quick.
Okay, can you try to give me permissions to share the screen one more time? If it doesn't work this time, we'll go to the alternative method here.
Yeah. Okay.
So I don't think it is going to do it.
Okay, I can share my screen.
Maybe it will if I do this. No, it's not. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, so if you get the design plan up and you can share it. Okay. Um, so the first update here is that the promised table of contents is actually is actually there. If you scroll down a little bit, Sue, you'll see that the table of contents appears below the cover page. And so we've got a list of the sections of the downtown plan and that stays hovering at the top of the page. So it makes navigating through it a lot easier than it was before. So if you want to jump down to the public space assessment, Sue, that's where I wanted to start.
I was really happy to see that that came online because it makes a big difference.
A lot more usable when it gets this long.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Actually, I'm sorry. I said assessment. I meant the public space strategies. Too many windows popping around on my computer. Okay, so we walked through the way around layout and the elements when we met last. Let me see, there is some new additional material filled into that, so as we get down, let's see, I'm screening on mine so I can find it. I think Sue, you're gonna probably want to get to the Flat Street. Preston, probably.
The Preston Lot?
Yeah, somewhere in there. I think I had the transportation center pieces in.
Sorry, I'm at the wet stone. Preston Lot?
Um, I think the new content actually probably picks up around Elliot Street, which is number seven. You can actually click on the numbers on the map if you want to move it more quickly.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I missed that I can move that map, so I learned something new. Okay.
Yeah. So I think I had the text in here before, but we did not have any images or didn't have the complete set of images in terms of what the cycle track could look like. And if you look at those the slides, using the side arrows, Sue, those are in there now. And then I'm trying to remember. It's been a while, so I'm a bit vague on how far along, what I had filled in and not. I knew there were some pieces I definitely remember we talked about. Did we talk about Harmony when I was last before the planning commission? Because that one has a complete set of drawings now, too.
Let me go there.
Next one down. So if you just carry on to number eight.
Yeah, sorry, I've got a bunch of stuff open.
Can I ask a question about the, the transportation center? There were references to more slides than were actually there. Is that, is that, that's to be installed at a later date?
I will go back and double check that. That's a sort of like last minute editing I need to do. I think when I was writing the text, I had a sense of what slides I was going to have, but I didn't have them yet. So I now need to make sure that after I've made slides, they still line up with my initial outline. So there may be that there's one less slide in the transportation center than I was thinking about doing. I think I had some thoughts of trying to do something on the lighting and found that it was next to impossible to produce an image of the poor lighting inside the parking garage. Maybe I could just have a black screen that says, this area is too hard to photograph.
Huh. I was sort of more hoping that it was going to be another thing, the opposite, which is what it would look like with better lighting installed.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is discussed. I think the slide that's missing is the slide for the discussion of the lighting. I could try to, I mean, you're really just talking about, you know, evenly lighting the interior. You could find maybe another example of another parking garage that is better lit, but it's one of those things where it's really hard from a photograph to illustrate good lighting. I, I think I failed to find something that was going to work, but I will look at that.
There was more thinking about what the, what, not sort of what the design recommendations were for. It would give us a sense of what the cost would be. Or is that something that we actually have to get somebody else to assess, what the, what the cost of additional lighting?
The cost estimate on that sort of thing is outside the scope of the design plan and that's actually one of the recommendations is to, I think the town has started that assessment of the lights and I don't know if they have gotten to the point of doing cost estimates on that, on replacing out the interior lights, but I know there was some, some, at least discussions of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll have to check in on the cost of the lighting. I know that there were discussions as well. I'm not really sure where it's at, so I can look into that.
I think that was the last, I think that was the last update we had. Was that, was under discussion, but not clear where that is. So Sue's got the slides up of Harmony Place. So these were the various alternatives that were in the earlier study that was done to look at various ways you could combine park and parking spaces or entirely convert Harmony to parking spaces. So there's been a lot, obviously, of different variations on the theme. And then the net.
There's a question for you, Brandy, and it's Tom, and he says, sorry to be terse with my words due to typing. What is the upper left one from the corner brown shading? So I'm wondering if it's the top second, the second one.
I think that's a building. But I will go back and look at the original. That is a good question. I somewhat suspiciously think that might be a building.
Okay, like an infill building?
Yeah, I'll pull up the PDF of the study. In fact, I think it might be linked even in there and see.
Okay.
At this scale, I can't quite remember. It has been a little bit since I've looked at it. That I can see what it, actually it may be right here.
Can I, can I ask a question about this? My understanding is there's a section of the Harmony Lot that is owned by the Brooks House and cannot be changed. Is that correct?
Felicity, you just read my mind because I was about to ask that question.
Okay.
Yes, there is. Can you, Sue, can you pull up one of the slides that has the either the photo or the drawn plan at full scale? So maybe go forward one. Well, it'll be the other direction.
I don't think there's a full scale plan in there yet.
There should be one.
Yep.
Yep.
This one, yeah, this one I thought needed more directions. It was hard to read.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to do this verbally. So the box that underneath, it says, convert one bay of parking spaces to a pocket park. You see that text? And there's sort of a rectangle on top of it?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, that's very slick. I haven't figured out how to do that in Zoom yet. That's awesome. That is the little structure, the little parking cover structure that's in the parking lot. That's where the break is between the public and the private spaces. So those covered spaces are private and the parking that goes beyond that towards the tunnel is private.
I'm sorry, and is the, is the tunnel a public right of way?
My understanding is no.
Okay, so that's another place where we would have to get permissions if we were going to turn that into the way around.
I don't know, Sue, what the, what the arrangements are. I know it's open as a pedestrian pass through, but not as a vehicular one. And there is some level of arrangement and agreement for that pedestrian use.
Yeah, it's, it's a little unclear. There seems to be some really old easements that indicate that there's some pedestrian use allowed there, but you know, would probably take a title search or an attorney to go through and really figure out if we would have any rights without kind of working with the property owners.
Tom has another comment. It's a much smaller section, just in northern part. Maps Online shows it. Is that, are you referring, you're referring to that, to what she's got on that?
Yeah, he's referring to the property line that Brandy was explaining.
That's, I mean, that's my, my understanding is that the bay of parking that starts where the structure is, is essentially where the public-private split is.
That's, that's about it.
So if we were, if we are going to make the way around, then we'd have to investigate this notion of the right of way for the tunnel.
Yeah, that would probably need some, some clarity. I mean, you could
I also had that reaction.
Right now, you could bike through it if you wanted to. But if you were going to sign it and market for that purpose, you would probably want to be sure that that was clearly provided for.
Okay.
So this ended up being the recommended design for Harmony that came out of the charrette. So it's the elimination of the one bay of parking and sort of creating a larger green space that connects to the private green space associated with the entrance to the college back there and some of the sort of service area at the back of the buildings. So merging those areas together. It, it takes up a little bit more than the two bays of parking because the bay of parking where the aisle goes through to the drive-through for the bank, if you might want to highlight that part, Sue. The, the bay of parking with the arrow, yeah, going that way. So that bay of parking Paul redesigned so that instead of being two perpendicular bays, it's a perpendicular and a parallel parking bay. So there's a few less spaces there, but it also is not as deep. So you're getting a little bit bigger of a green space than just the one double aisle, you know, double loaded parking aisle area.
What's happening on the left-hand side where you've got the text that says reconfigure front parking bays to make room for the way around?
And that's the same, the same idea. It's taking the one bay that's perpendicular and making it parallel and then widening out the sidewalk to create a wider multi-use path area.
Sorry, and that, and that T would be?
The T is what's actually there. That's the median where the pay station is right now.
So, but those would continue to be parking spots or that would all be?
That would all continue in its current configuration.
Okay. And the same thing would be true with the entrance, that those, those short-term parking spots would all stay? Or what is the, what's the blue dot?
There would be a reduction because the, instead of being two angled or perpendicular bays, there would be one parallel and one angled. So there'd be a few less spaces, but there would still be spaces on both sides.
Okay. Do you have a count of the current spaces and the number with this proposal?
Um, yes, that's covered in the text, Sue. If you want to, I can't remember.
Okay, great.
116 right now. And I think if we scroll down through the text, it will say what the reduction is. You just use the down arrow.
Repeat that, Brandy. I was reading Oscar's question.
If you just use the down arrow to go down the page on, yeah. I think we'll get to how many parking spaces would be removed. Yes, down, now one more paragraph maybe? The last, yeah. Unfortunately, those, the nice trees in the parking lot are ashes. So that's about 20 fewer spaces than there are now.
Sue, how are you dealing with discussion? Is this a good time for Oscar to speak?
Um, well, I wonder if Brandy wants us, wants to walk through anything else and then open it up for general general comments and questions from the board and then public.
I would say that the difficulty of navigating two things in here, if there are questions that are pertinent to something that's up on the screen, it may be better to deal with them while they're up. What do you think?
Yep, I do agree with that. So then I guess the question is, Oscar, is yours pertaining to Harmony Lot? Or should we?
It, it, well, I have a two-part question that, the second part of which pertains to this. Should I do that now?
Felicity?
Yes, yes, absolutely, please.
Okay. Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I mean, I Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I mean, I, I'm sure I'm going to be asking stuff that's redundant. And I read a draft of this a while ago and I reread this draft, but I'm sure, you know, there's conversations I could have been in a while ago. But, so I guess my, my biggest question, having read the plan, are there, were there specific problems with Brattleborough's downtown that were identified that the plan is designed to solve? Like, was there a mission statement or a stated goal? Or, or, or is this more of sort of like general best practices applied to the specifics of Brattleborough? Like just upkeep and doing things according to a certain philosophy? Does that question make sense?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you want to take some of the beginning of that? And then I can chime in with anything else about what's in the text?
Yeah, so back when we did the town plan, the need for a downtown plan was identified. And we knew that there were some transportation projects, particularly the Hinsdale Bridge, that would be coming and changing downtown. We, you know, over the years, we've heard comments about, you know, how downtown feels or what the parking areas are like. And so, you know, we decided to take a design plan route where we were looking at public spaces, especially when, you know, activating streets and, you know, was just becoming more common. So it was just one approach to doing the downtown plan.
And I would say there is a list of, of goals and a little bit of background about why the project is, has been pursued back up in that intro section, the about section. So there were a series of bullets. Yeah, the bullet points at the top. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, my question about Harmony, and I don't have an opinion on this really, but just like, would, what is the problem with Harmony Parking Lot that more green space would address? Is, like, I don't even know if I, off the top of my head, think there is a problem with Harmony Parking Lot that would suggest a change? Or if there is one, like, is it something that, I just, there are a lot of, there are competing philosophies about all this stuff. And I'm just, I'd love to know more about how you got to particular solutions. So maybe this is a good specific example, and then I won't waste a ton of your guys' time.
So as you can see, there's an earlier study that also addressed this question around the future design of Harmony. So the idea that it might be converted to a park has been in existence for some time and was picked back up as part of this study. The, the reason that I think this space is looked to for that purpose is that it is, has traditionally and long served as a, a community gathering space and then hangout space in an informal way. But, and it's also a sheltered space back behind the buildings. So the idea of having outdoor dining space or a performance space that's downtown and outdoors, but not so, so challenged by the traffic noise on Main Street. So that makes, that's one of the reasons for looking at this space as a place to try to create some of that kind of outdoor gathering space that people would like to see more of in downtown Brattleborough.
Okay, and final part three, did, I saw the survey responses and I don't, I just never had a sense that there were a ton of people dying to hang out in downtown Brattleborough, but couldn't do it for lack of a space. I mean, I just feel like more green space, more parks is the sort of thing that I would expect to see in a survey result as what people might identify. But I'm just, I, was there sort of a, was there a process in between, like, oh, people say they would like more parks, but would this be the healthiest thing for downtown? I mean, it's, it's less density, it's, et cetera. Like, a lot of the places that I might think of as, as open and available for public use that already exist, like, they often don't get it and they don't end up getting used for those purposes that often. They often become like, sort of, you know, Pliny Park is not a place where I see a ton of cool stuff all the time. It's usually just sort of empty and, there are times when these areas look like gaps in the downtown. So, I don't know, I, I just, that's my question. When, whenever I hear about, you know, more green spaces and public, and public spaces and stuff like that, I'm just always curious about the decision-making process because
I, I think, Oscar, that, so Brandy had a landscape architect on her team. And through the charrette process, me, through the charrette process, there was a lot of people that would come through and sit and talk with him. Where was I going? The, you know, the feedback that we got was that, and both from him and from the public, is those other spaces are not necessarily designed well in an inviting way. And so some of the images that you see in this plan are an attempt to make them more inviting spaces that people want to hang out. But then the reality is that, you know, Pliny Park is small. There is no green in it. There's a couple of trees, so those are green, but it's, it's a concrete patio-type park. It sits at an intersection, so there's idling and large, you know, loud noises. Similar, you can say, about Fountain Park and Plaza Park. That we've got these small spaces, but they're not necessarily designed to be inviting to spend a lot of time there. So this, this idea of putting something in the Harmony Lot, which has traditionally been a hangout spot, was an attempt to have a nicer space that was, you know, quieter and, you know, that people could gather in.
Okay.
Can, can I ask a question that's sort of, I mean, it's kind of related, which is, Brandy did, in, in, I know it's probably too much to ask, but I'm wondering if, if in your thinking about any of this, you've, you've put in thinking about COVID and alternative uses of these spaces that might help downtown business, things like that?
I mean, this one is one that clearly would be beneficial. And I think you were, you, that was one of the considerations, right, that, Sue, that the town considered closing off some of these parking spaces to convert them over to outdoor space for the businesses to be able to use. So I think that, you know, providing that kind of outdoor area that would be beneficial clearly in this time, but is a long-term benefit to the particularly dining type of restaurants where, where people might want to, to either, if, even if they didn't front on this, you could have, you know, tables, chairs. People could come with takeout food, things like that. So it does provide some bit of a refuge off of Main Street as a place to sit outside in downtown Brattleborough. And in fact, in the recommendations, you could test this out, concept out, by closing off that one bay for a season and setting it up with the parklet, you know, concept, basically. You wouldn't have the green space, but you could plant, put in planters and, and tables and things like that and, and test it out and see, you know, how it does affect parking and traffic flow and things like that and usage. So it is something you could even do a pop-up style test of for a summer.
Is that something we can do, Sue?
Sure, I mean, we'd have to get the approvals and, and whatnot, but it's, I don't think it, you know, it's not going to happen this summer necessarily because of the parklets, but we can always try.
Are we thinking that the parklets are sufficient, the ones that have been put in place, that are going to be sufficient for the, for the businesses?
I think we don't know. It's a test.
And do we have any, is it possible, given these nice sketches, to have dimensions? So that in addition to thinking about the loss of parking space, we can also get a sense of how many people, if you're requiring people to be six feet apart from each other, how many people at any one time can be in these spaces safely? Although I gather
I, I don't know the dimensions off the top of my head, but I, I can figure them out.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I was going to say that I, my understanding is now that it's, it's now actually three to six feet. That, that, those recommendations are actually changing. But that was in a conversation with a Canadian, so that may be in Canada. And it hasn't, hasn't filtered down to the US yet. But anyway, I mean, I think for those purposes, it would be useful, you'd be, if, if it's not too much trouble, it would be useful to have a sense of how big these spaces are. It might look less
I could do that and give, give you an estimate of that area. I mean, it's not an enormous space here. I mean, if you, you can kind of visualize what a, you know, it's going to be roughly 60 feet, it's be a bit more than 60 feet wide. And then what is there? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So if there's eight parking spaces across there, if they're roughly 10 feet each, it's going to be 80 feet. So if you're kind of thinking of what that square is bounded by the sidewalks with the trees and this little stage area, my guess is it's going to be a little bit more than 60 because this is, this has moved and it's not two perpendicular bays anymore. So maybe it's 70 by 80 or something like that in terms of space.
That's not shabby.
And I, I just want to add that, you know, this area was looked at for, to provide outdoor dining rather than the parklets. But one of the reasons it didn't move forward at this time was we really, the restaurants, you know, have to do tracking of who's in their spaces. And so it was just easier to provide kind of the parklets as a defined space that each restaurant was controlling so that they could keep track of the people who've been dining there and they could clean and so, but, but there, you know, this would have been a great place to test as well.
Well, that, but that's important in terms of ongoing. If that's going to be a consistent feature, then the spaces are going to have, are going to have to be, they're going to have, have to have more capacity to surveil them, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, in the long term, this kind of space would be most advantageous to a, a restaurant business that actually opened out onto it, that fronted on it from one of those back buildings, yeah.
Or it, it might work for folks getting takeout but not getting served like by waitstaff?
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, so if there's something else in Harmony, we should carry on through here. High Grove is now in there. It's probably a good next spot to stop and look at.
I wasn't, on this one, Brandy, I think it mentioned that, you know, go, sorry, I just went too far. It mentioned something about different slides and I couldn't get past the video.
Yes, I know. That's one of the things that's broken.
It's broken?
It's, it's broken on here right now, but there are, there is a drawing for, for Harmony. And I, I just am now realizing that it is not published, it is not working, whereas in my edit screen it is. So I will have to go back to that and see what I can do to fix it, which is too bad because it would be, I wanted you to look at the High Grove drawing. And my screen not cooperating is also not being good. So Sue, I'm going to, can I email you the file?
Yep.
Okay. And then we, we can come back to it maybe, but I'll email it over to you. Let me grab it.
Did, did you propose to reduce the number of parking spots there?
Yes, and that's in the text. So that's 128 spaces right now. And the design takes it down to 98. So it loses 30 spaces. So right now, it's a very odd shape as a result of topography and what used to be there. So the parking dimensions of the current parking lot vary quite a bit. And, you know, there's any, you probably get that sense if you drive in there, that there's places that are tight and there's places that feel really wide in terms of driving through it. And that is the actual reality of the layout. So there's actually a fair, a decent way to sort of realign the line through the parking lot
Oh, my gosh.
And get to the parking and still get quite a bit of green space and not lose as many parking spaces as you might think, given the amount of additional green space. So I emailed it over to you, Sue.
Yep, just trying to open it.
Sue, is there a way you can get rid of that little yellow squiggle? It's, it's an edit from your Harmony Lot thing.
Erase all drawings, yes. Okay.
Oh, nice.
Yes, so this would take it, the parking lot, and basically make it two one-way aisles. It kind of is that now and kind of isn't. It, it, it seems like it should be, but it, because of the dimensions, it doesn't really, people don't really do it that way. And so you could reduce down the width of the drive aisles, put in angled parking in this instance. I normally don't like it, but given the weird geometry of this piece of land, it actually works better in here. And then get a central spine for the path and some green space, which would give you some space for the restrooms. And then the stormwater bio-retention treatment area in, in the corner. Right now, the whole parking lot is already graded so that it all drains that way. So it wouldn't take a lot of redo in terms of how water is directed and captured to, to direct it into a, a stormwater treatment there.
Sorry, that little corner there looks, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at it with mine to, as you go past the public restrooms in order to exit, that seems very narrow, but presumably it's not that narrow.
It's, it's, it's tight in there, but you remember it's a one-way aisle. And that wall, it's drawn here at a 90-degree. It isn't actually quite. The back dimensions of that, when you actually, you can, you can get the sense of the topo behind it.
Oh, I see.
You see that? The wall actually, in reality, follows that topo line a bit more. And so the, it, it too is not a regular shape, but trying to draw that out, get it into our system, we just eventually drew some straight lines that roughly followed the dimensions of the parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brandy, would there be parking here, angled parking here, or no?
Yeah, there would be two rows of angled parking in that section. And then there, probably not all the way to the very corner, under the M or the S for restrooms, but you would get some angled parking in there and then there, yep.
And then here.
And then one row there, but not any on the, yeah, and then on the opposing side too. Yep.
Would it be both sides?
Is the continuation of the, of the way around?
Yeah, it would come through the middle. And so it would eliminate, right now, the side, there's a sidewalk on the, which way am I looking? On the east side of the, of the lot. That continues from the, the building at the corner of High Street and goes across the lot. So that would get eliminated too and would put the pedestrian access to the middle.
Hey, Brandy, is, are these illustrations the final ones?
Pretty much. I make some Pretty much. I make some other final tweaks to them based on what we talk about tonight, but essentially, yes.
My thought was just, some folks might have a hard time understanding maybe where the parking's going, so if there's a way we can kind of distill that, maybe if there wasn't a drawing or a narrative, just to give.
I could put some of the little cars in. I didn't get around to putting the little cars in this time. It sort of helps to just have the little cars in the parking lot.
I bet. All right, great, thank you.
It might also be nice to have directional arrows. Is that not a normal thing in this kind of plan? Just so people know where north, southeast, and west are.
I can put a north arrow on it, too.
Great.
A lot of these are sort of built from just the quick sketches we did at the Charette, so they're not a lot, there's not a lot of technical info on them because they were built from the tree stuff that we were working on.
One more comment to Oscar's point is, is the expectation that this is gonna be a place where people are gonna hang under those trees? Or is it really more to just get some more trees in there? And to do the storm, the bio-retention?
In this instance, you do have the ability to have some public amenities up there, the restroom amenity, and you could put out, you know, some tables or some benches as well. But it is, the green space, I think it would be more about the stormwater. And in fact, Amy's recommendation, when she looked at this, was that the walkway materials themselves, so that whole center island could basically become a storage media type of thing, that's a water would be collected in there and then discharged into the bio-retention area treated before it goes into the stormwater system. So basically, all of the non-parking space portions would function as part of the stormwater collection and filtration system.
I have a comment about the way around. That, like, I like different parts of it, but others, I feel like to implement it in is gonna be, take a long time and a lot of money. And there is the whole part of, we're losing parking kind of all over the place if we were actually to do it. Because there was some, I think, that was gonna be lost on High Street, Elliot Street. So I'm just kind of wondering if that is if it's even achievable.
I think from an increment, there's pieces of it that are a lot easier to do, clearly, that could be done fairly readily. Marking and signing the existing streets and starting to put in some of the bike the bike pieces on the town streets. Then there are parts of it that would be much larger projects. Something like this one on High Grove, probably the path wouldn't necessarily be the trigger reason you would redo that parking lot. It might be more of a, we want to do a stormwater project. And this could be folded into that. And certainly, it's possible to get through the parking lot today, walking or biking under its current condition and still, you know, so it still, it functions. It's not like you have a piece that, you know, there is missing from a trail network, for instance, if you it's discontinuous, it's just really the the level of the amenity that goes along with it, right? You'd be working towards improving. And there is a slide down at the end where I've tallied up the parking losses or removals totaled from all of this. And they stay within the number that the parking study indicated was excess supply.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have a, I mean, it's a related, it's a related comment. I mean, going through the plan again this afternoon, I was thinking, it seems to me, and I'm sure it's gonna seem to some, some members of the public when they look at it, that the plan is really intentionally designed to force people to park in the transportation center. Because that's the place that is not losing any parking spaces. And I'm just wondering if anybody put forward the idea of turning the top of the transportation center into a public park.
It's my understanding that that's not structurally possible.
Oh, that's right. We talked about. All right, okay. But is there, I mean, back to this other point of, how do we respond when people say that?
That is the goal.
That is the goal, okay.
Parking garage first and reduce the surface parking and reallocate some of that surface, the space that's currently given to surface parking to other public uses.
I guess I'm curious, I'm interested in hearing from the commissioners if they all feel that they can get behind that notion. I don't know that we've ever talked about that as a commission, that we have that on our agenda and we would like to make that happen.
Can you specify, like, to make what happen, Felicity?
To have, to populate the transportation center. I'm sorry, I put my camera back on so that you see me talking. To say, we have a transportation center, it's full of all these parking spaces. We think people should be parking there and making use of that space as opposed to putting your cars all over town. We should collect the cars in the parking garage and then have fewer parking spaces and instead have more trees and more public spaces where people can sit and play music and hang out and do stuff.
I think that's really reflected in the whole plan with all the, like, take a few away here, a few away there. And then also develop the amenity of the parking garage with improved lighting and that sort of thing. So I think, like, committing to this idea is sort of committing to that value, that we want people to use this facility that we invested millions of dollars in for specifically parking. So the rest of the downtown can be more friendly and accessible and to both vehicle users and pedestrians and multimodal transportation folks.
So can we be more from center about that as being one of our, what we're doing as opposed to sneaking in through the back door? If that's.
I can emphasize the point more. I think it is definitely there in the text. Maybe not, you know, quite upfront and direct, but I think that is the definite sense. In somewhere in here, I know there is language along those lines that really the goal, you know, in order for the other amenities, I think it's actually expressed, maybe Felicity, in the opposite direction. That in order for the other amenities to be created downtown that people want, then parking needs to be directed first to the transportation center.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if that, it just seems to me, going through it, that we need to, since people really, the one piece you get from all of those public statements is people hate that place.
Yep.
I mean, that's a piece of work. I mean, we can't just say, so, you know, you hate it, but you're gonna have to use it because we're taking away your other parking. You know, people don't tend to really respond when they're bullied into things.
Yeah, this is Kate. I think that, I could get behind the idea of, you know, trying to move more of the parking burden into the parking garage. I think we I think we should be upfront about the benefits of doing that and also about the improvements to the safety or perceived safety of the parking garage, which I think was the biggest piece of feedback we got in people's hesitancy to use the parking garage was, I don't feel safe parking in the parking garage. The other point I was gonna make, which is, I'm not sure how much we got from this in feedback, but also making sure that people know there will still be accessible parking to parts of downtown, because if you think about accessibility, the parking garage is sort of, is on the Elliot Street end of downtown, but, you know, someone with mobility issues might need to still use the High Grove lot because that's just like a little bit further to, closer to the post office, say. So making sure that, you know, that people understand that there's still going to be parking spread through downtown, so if they have a mobility issue and they need to be closer to the post office, it's there for them.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna get on Oscar's point because I was gonna say the same thing, you know, obviously change isn't easy, but obviously with time, perception can change if more folk are using the transportation center. And as Oscar pointed out, you know, parking garage is more full and bustling with all these people, maybe more often. People will probably over time feel safer with having larger crowds around, a lot of people walking around, and then, you know, hopefully that perception will change with downtown. And then people wanna park in the parking garage because they know that there's gonna be these, many of these in other locations. So obviously, things don't happen immediately, but I think it's a good idea to back an initiative like this that's really aimed to try to create, not like a win-win, but in a way that you can get these downtown amenities, but also address parking because we know that there's enough spaces in the transportation center.
Okay.
Okay. So I think, let me pull mine back up here, so I think we should probably carry on, keeping my eye on the time as well. There's a little bit more in here around the back of the municipal building and trying to figure out how to get over to the common. That's also a piece that, if there's sort of a break in the system, there's the getting between Flat Street and Elliot Street, so basically the transportation center and the change in terrain as a challenge. And then there is this one, which is getting across Linden Street or along Linden Street in some manner. There's just not physical room. So much to get in there. But there is, of course, opportunities if we can get through some of the private properties to get off the road and come through. And there's more than one option. The line shows the easiest, most direct route, but there are several property owners in there, so there is a couple of ways you could consider fitting a path in. So that's the end of the way around piece.
I just wanted to go back to the start of the way around, and I like the way that the designs came together for the Depot Riverfront Park and how Bridge Street could be with the, I'm not gonna say it right, and it's because it's not in front of me, the Wunfrin?
Wunuff.
The Wunuff.
Wunuff. And I liked the, kind of the reimagining of the archery building with either an amphitheater or a stage and a public restroom, too, so.
Then this came up on the Charette drawings as well.
What's that?
That was the design that came up through the Charette drawings of reusing that building, or at least the building footprint down there by the depot.
Wasn't there, was there some restriction on using that, tearing down that building? Isn't it some kind of, is it historic or did I just totally imagine that?
No, it's in the historic district and I've heard over the years that there's, some people believe that it's one of the original train stations in Brattleboro. I don't believe the Section 106 and kind of report, or some of the reporting on it doesn't seem to indicate that, but it was definitely a railroad siding building. And it's because we've used federal funds down there, it is subject to Section 106 of the Federal Historic Preservation. But there's ways.
Yeah.
If it was to be demolished, there are ways that you could preserve its history, either through monument or photographic evidence and that kind of thing. So it's, there's options with the building.
And the design shows essentially staying within the same footprint, so whether you reuse the structure, the degree to which the structure is sound at this point, I think, is somewhat uncertain. So it may, even if you wanted to save it, it might be a considerable reconstruction project rather than a rehabilitation project. And the rules do, the historic preservation rules do vary depending on whether you are doing rehab or you have a building that's got to essentially be replaced or rebuilt almost in kind.
Oscar's got a question. Oscar, you wanna go ahead?
Yes, quick question or note in the, in the Wetstone Brook section, just wanted to mention that there's a section about the desire to have the area be more heavily policed and just to note that that section might be worth at least taking another look at in the current context.
Thank you, Oscar. I had that on my list as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say from the survey results, the breakdown of people who did mention policing along the Wetstone Pathway, it was probably somewhere around, and eighty percent of the respondents who were speaking about policing wanted to see more regular patrols, but more likely in the way of foot patrols than in terms of they wanted a sense that there were officers around, but not necessarily interacting and pushing people out of the space. Just sort of being, it was being observed or watched in a way. And then about twenty percent of the people who had comments to say about the policing was that they were avoiding spaces like the Wetstone Pathway because of what they felt was an overly high level of policing already occurring. So in terms of the breakdown and how people viewed the policing in that space, that that was roughly.
I think, though, that, Brandy, we probably need to take a look at that because if you polled the public today, there might be a very different opinion. And policing seems strong. So I do think we should probably look at the wording there, even though I understand the survey results said that. I just think we have to be.
Yeah, I wonder if we, if it's possible to, where is the conversation happening? I know there was a one comment in the select board meeting that I attended, and now I can't remember what the date was, about the notion of policing in Brattleboro, and I wonder if there's a, where is that conversation happening now and is it possible for us to take some information from that, wherever that conversation is happening and reword policing to something else?
I would say, unless somebody's more involved with it than me, I would say that conversation is just beginning, Felicity. There were lots of comments at the select board meeting when they passed the budget on Tuesday night. There was the the police chief's open forum on Wednesday night with lots of comments as well. I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna proceed, but the conversation is just beginning.
So maybe, I mean, maybe I'm not following protocol in the timing of this, but I'm just curious. I mean, it would help me think about this in terms of how, what the rollout for the public is and how do we invite public comment and what's the timeframe of that so we get a sense of how precise we need to be in our language.
So if we want to transition to that conversation a little bit here at this point, the scope of work for the project indicated that this design plan was going to end with a final presentation. And that the work products were going to be the web-based content, a poster and a brochure-style executive summary. So the story map is that web-based content, obviously, and then the poster and brochure will be built off the graphics that are in here. So we are essentially pretty much ready to do that final presentation, following whatever modifications need to be made from your review. So my thought is that we need to decide what the format of that final presentation is going to be, since obviously the community meeting that we envisioned is not going to be possible. Um, and then set a date for it. So the two options that I've been doing with projects, um, this is not obviously the only one of these, um, issues out there. I've got a number of projects that have need to have some sort of substitute conclusion to the final community meeting that was intended, um, is to either do something in more of a video format, which is more of a conclusion, but without a conversation. Um, or to try to do something in this vein, a Zoom style meeting with the Q and A and, um, opportunity for comment. Um, with regards to this, I would say that the context for doing a downtown design plan has obviously shifted a whole lot in the last four months. And we can't go back and readdress everything that we might address today. Um, just because of where we are in the process. And so there is, I think, a bit of a challenge with the community meeting. I think people's questions and comments will be of a different nature, possibly than what the content is here today. Um, I still think that this content in the long range is, is good and will serve the community, but it isn't necessarily the content for the community conversation that needs to be held about downtown in the next two or three months. So it's a bit of a challenging question to sort of figure out what would make the most sense to conclude the project.
What are your thoughts, Sue?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a bit of a conundrum. Um, first of all, I think that there is a whole lot of content in here that I think that just like one Zoom meeting would not necessarily do it justice. So I, I, I kind of like the video, maybe doing a couple on a, some of the topics, unless you disagree, Brandy, and you think it could all be done in, in one video, but.
No, I think breaking it up into some smaller segments is probably good.
Um, so I kind of like the idea of videos that can be made available, but I also think that we do need the Q and A and the chat. So I, I don't know if it's possible to do something where we film some videos, we make them available. And then we have a couple of, you know, drop, you know, sessions where people can get on and, um, ask those questions. I, with or without Brandy being on it, you know, it, maybe it's staff and, and planning commissioners. But I feel like there does need to be the back and forth so that we, you know, feel comfortable finalizing it.
And then, and, um, has, has Stephanie Bonan seen this or other people who, uh, whose organizations are mentioned in it? Have they, have they, have they also been invited to participate in this process? Or are they just, is it just going to get dropped on them?
I wouldn't say that they would get dropped on them. Um, they were involved with some of the process in the beginning. Um, but I also sit on the DBA board, so this is not going to just be dropped on them. We'll probably discuss it at a meeting or, you know, I'll have a discussion with Stephanie.
Have they seen?
Definitely going to share it with her.
Okay, but she hasn't seen it yet?
No.
What do y'all think?
How about the, uh, how, how about?
Wait, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I'm, I'm sorry. I think we overlapped. Um, Sue, I think at the end of the last meeting, didn't we share it with Stephanie and a few others, um, as well?
Uh, we may have. I just don't re, I don't really remember.
That we did. I know, um, the River to River Artist Group has had it. I, I haven't gotten any comments back from them, but I know we shared it with them. I thought we, I thought we shared it with Stephanie, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Neither am I. But I will be sharing it with her first thing in the morning.
Jessica, what's your comment? Sorry.
Oh, I was just, uh, wondering if we could add to that list, like Parks and Rec and, uh, Public Works, just to get those first eyes on it. I, I, we did have this conversation, Brandy, last time you were with us. Absolutely. Um, I just don't remember who got tasked with things and and if we ever
Yeah, I've definitely talked about it again. In parks, you know.
Talked about getting Stephanie in, on board because we had, we had taken some of her resources and allocated them to this.
Well, it backed off, yeah, it backed off a little bit. I did have a conversation with Stephanie. I'm not sure I sent this story map. I, I honestly can't remember because it was right as COVID started and.
It was right as the chaos began.
It was. It was the beginning of March that we had that meeting. Um, but Stephanie and I did talk and she was gonna come to the April meeting and all of that. Um, so I will definitely circle back with her. I speak to Steve and Carol from Reckon Parks and DPW, uh, twice per week. And so this is definitely something I'll share with, uh, them as well.
Oscar's got two more questions. Oscar.
Thank you for tolerating all of this. Um, a general question, once the plan is, is finalized and out there, what it, what is its future? As like what, what happens next in terms of implementing or the town making a decision on doing stuff and budgeting for it and all that stuff?
So the next steps would be, um, you know, if, if the select board adopts it and it becomes a plan, then, you know, through our, through the departments, you know, it just becomes something that we're trying to implement. We're looking for grants or as maybe we make improvements to the areas, we are taking a look at it and, um, seeing if we can't implement parts of it.
Okay.
Does, um, does the downtown plan or would the downtown plan come into budget conversations for next fiscal year?
It could.
And then my other question is really simple, silly one. Is it possible to also offer this full plan as just like a plain text document with no images? Because, um, it, the current layout is very cool and is a great way to visualize stuff, but there's like preparing for this meeting. I would have loved to have just been able to, to burn through a couple of like black text on white backgrounds kind of thing. Um, so if there's a way to just turn the text into one long thing, that could be really good, but that's all.
So just for the planning commission's, uh, background knowledge, there is a way to create a PDF out of this. I have yet to, um, try it out and see what the product looks like. And there is, um, draft text. It, to be honest, I've made some changes in the last few days that aren't reflected in that document at this point. But, um, editing text on the screen like this isn't the best, isn't the most efficient anyways. That's why I, I had made it. Um, but that is, that is something that if you want, um, can be provided.
It, uh, it actually looks like if you just click on the three dots at the top right of the downtown, up the top right of the screen there next to the social media.
Yeah, I have yet to sort of see what that actually produces.
Oh yeah, that looks good. Sorry.
You might be seeing it on the screen in a minute now.
Yeah.
I don't know how all the side things work, uh, you know, when you, you're clicking through, but.
I'm not sure. And I just had a real, I just realized, Sue, as I was, I was looking ahead to see what other sections I wanted to go. And I had been working back and forth between two computers and one set of changes that I thought I had made are not showing up in the published version. So I think I have to go back to the other computer and see if my changes are still sitting around. That's the Elliot Street and Flat Street stuff. So those places still look blank, but they are actually done. So I have a little more homework to deal with this thing.
I have to say, I mean, if you can see it going through on your screen, it doesn't look bad. I mean, I'm sure it's a hundred page document, but.
Yeah, that actually comes through better than I had anticipated. See, that looks pretty good.
Yeah, I'm actually, yeah, that's great.
Great.
So, um, can I, can I ca, call you out there, Prudence? I, I think of you as the sort of bike person on the, on the, on the commission. Um, I'd, I, I'd like to hear your comments vis a vis the sort of way around and ways in which we can garner support for that because as Sue pointed out, it looks pretty costly. But it's the best thing we've got going for how we get more bike and non-car uh, traffic in, in the downtown area. So it seems like we need to drum up support for that so that we can, um, finance it.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, whoops. I, I have to talk quietly because my grandson's on the edge of going to sleep. I think we need to drum up support in general for the plan. I guess I'm a little concerned that this will go to the select board, perhaps they'll pass it. And then, you know, without much energy behind it. Um, in terms of the biking, um, there's, you know, there's a pretty active biking community. The big question I think is that connection between Flat and, um, Elliot Street.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and probably the experienced bikers, I mean, I didn't, I looked at this before three o'clock, so I just looked at, you know, sort of a limited amount of information. But, um, we're, we're giving up on bike lanes on Main Street. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll have to do some selling because experienced bikers want to go the most direct route. You know, and so it'll be, it'll be, I think, important to, to present it and advocate to the biking community and then get their response. Can that be part of the focus of the public meeting? Or the public?
I mean, I think there's different, definitely groups that we need to, um, get it out to and present to and get feedback.
I mean, it seems we're also gonna have to come, um, come, deal with the fact that the people who are going to be looking at it are going to be looking at it in the context of having all those parklets on Main Street now, which obviously were not part of the plan and they were, they're, they're, they have totally reconfigured downtown.
Well, that's true.
Well, I think, but I think what's exciting about that is if you get to the Main Street stuff and we talk about widening sidewalks, I mean, if you had a wider sidewalk there, then the restaurants could have the seating there. You wouldn't need a parklet. You could have your dining out front, you know, like lots of other cities and enough room to walk still. Um, so I, I was thinking that this, this plan probably needs a preface and whether I write it and relate it to COVID and, you know, set some context, you know, kind of to the part where we started this pre-COVID and now it's post-COVID, but here's all these things relate. Um, yeah, I mean, sure, they're thinking of the parklets, but they also would have preferred to have their dining on the sidewalk. I do know that. So having a wider sidewalk could allow that.
And so the plan does walk, oh, sorry, Felicity?
Go ahead, Brandy.
I was gonna say the plan does walk through the rationale, but behind that choice of, of not going with the bike lanes. Um, so I think that, you know, we can make a fairly solid presentation around what, uh, you know, prioritizing the available space based on that.
So how to, how to proceed? How, how, what, what, what's the next step?
Well, I need to, to do some fine tuning and I need feedback and final edits essentially. We're at that point. So, um, if, if you can spend some time looking through, um, and I'm gonna spend some time fixing a few of the things that are still problematic here. Um, but overall, you know, if there are drawings that don't seem that you, we've hit on a bit of that tonight, if there are things you don't understand or texts that you think, um, needs to be revisited. Um, and I think directing comments back through Sue and then to me, um, will be good, good way to do that. And then, um, we need to set some dates in terms of what the framework is for coming to an end. And I, 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 my sense was from the previous conversation that the video probably sounds like a way to, to go forward. Um, and then think about how to incorporate some opportunity for Q and A and comments into that.
Yeah, that seems right. Um, Sue, thinking about timing, we've got, we've got housing and zoning that we want on our, um, and I know we've also sort of got, uh, trying to address ourselves to, um, uh, structural racism and, um, how we can operate towards assisting that. Um, so, I, Oscar's got a comment. Yeah, i- in addition to that, there are, there are some empty sections, Brandy, that.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm, I'm mystified. I have to go get onto my other computer and figure out where my content went to.
Okay, okay. So maybe is it, is there a way for you to give us a sort of absolute deadline? When, when, when everything will be up there so that we all go and look at it and we're not looking at it and finding unfinished drafts?
Um, I'm just thinking through my, my schedule here. I think that the end of the week should be feasible. I've got to, I've got to redirect myself, my attentions for another day or two here, but I should be able to get back to this. I'm hoping that actually all that has to happen is I have to go log in on my other computer to edit it and the stuff is still sitting there unpublished.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be a huge problem. If not, I have to just redo what I do.
So we've got another week before our next meeting. Week and a half before our next meeting, two weeks must be because it's not next month.
Two weeks.
Yeah. Um, and presumably that meeting we have zoning, um, Sue?
Well, Felicity, this is a priority because we need to close out this grant. So I don't want to keep pushing off the zoning, zoning, but we do need to, for several reasons, we do need to wrap this up, the most being that it's got to be closed out with the state soon. So at least part of the agenda I think does need to be, Brandy, can you wait two weeks for the comments?
Yeah.
Or no, do you want that before?
I mean, I think I've got enough material that I can move forward with the poster and the brochure part. Um, and we can start talking a little bit, you and I, about the video maybe.
I think, uh, can I, can I make a suggestion? If we, the commissioners all go through this on their own and send comments to who that are then funneled, funneled back to Brandy? Just so that when, when we all meet again, that, that the nitpicky things like directional things are already been done? And we can have a more substantive conversation about the, about, uh, discussions with the public rather than small, small fry commentary. Is that, would that be difficult for people? Okay, so can, is that possible, Sue? I mean, I'm, that's putting a lot of work. Is it possible for everybody to, uh, commenting back to?
That's a great idea.
Okay.
So commenting back when?
Um, I think if, if, Brandy, if you think you can complete it by Friday, give us a week so that, so Friday is, uh, the 26th. So one week from that is gotta be July something or other.
It's July 3rd.
So that would be July 3rd. Well, so maybe could we save July 1? And then that gives you three days to input whatever comments we send you so that when we're looking on the phone, looking at an absolutely finished thing. Is that too much?
Uh, July 1, go ahead, Brandy.
It, depending on the amount of work that I need to do, I, I was planning on taking a few days off over the holiday weekend, but we'll see what, where we end up and how much you need done. I don't want to overpromise.
Um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not imagining, you guys can come in. I'm imagining that we're gonna do terribly large substantive things. I would imagine that they're gonna be small.
If, if, I, I think if it's, yeah, it, I, I probably should be able to handle, you know, minor edits and adjustments, but major overhauls maybe not.
Do people think they can get, if, if we see the thing by the 26th, do people, do people think they can get stuff back by the 30th? I'm, I'm seeing one nodding head. How about the rest of you?
Yes, Kate says yes.
Kate says yes. Prudence says yes. Kathy? Tom? Yes, says Kathy. It says yes. Prudence says yes. Kathy? Tom? Yes, says Kathy. Jessica? Tom, Tom just turned his camera off. That's not a good sign. Yes, says Tom. How about you, Jessica? Yes. Okay, good. All right. So will, will you get it to us by the 26th? We'll get it back to you by the 30th?
Yes.
And then, and then when we have our July meeting, we can just be talking about more substantive things about how to present it to the public.
Okay.
Sound good?
Good. That does sound good.
Okay.
And then Brandy and I can also chat when she's got time about how we roll it out to the public as well, so that on that conversation on the 3rd, we can have the plan in place for that.
I don't know if it's kosher, but I should, I will send you a picture of your comments to send them on, too, because your functioning right now is our public. To have your commentary. Great, thanks. Okay. What else do we need to do, Sue?
I don't believe there's anything else on the agenda. I gotta pull it up.
Next meeting, we already did, so.
Next meeting is July 6. Yeah, I think this.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Kate will second.
Kate will second. And all those in favor of adjourning at 7: something or other, because my clock is not right. All those in favor signify by thumbs up. We stand adjourned. Thanks all.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care, everyone.
Enjoy our lovely Mississippi weather.